All right. The regular meeting of the Mishawaka Common Council for July 6, 2020 will please come to order. This evening, once again, in light of Governor Holcomb's extension of his executive order that modifies governmental meetings and extends the public health emergency through August 3, 2020, we will once again be operating under some modified procedures. For those who are participating remotely, members of the public will be asked to place their microphone on mute during the meeting with the exception of any public hearing. At the appropriate point in the public hearing, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting such comments as they wish to make, one person at a time. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record, and after completing his or her public comments, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute, and we thank everyone for their cooperation. For those of you in attendance, it looks like we should be okay with regard to social distancing and the limitation on physical presence in the chambers, but if we have a last-minute rush of human beings who want to attend the council meeting in person, we may have to ask some of you to step out while we proceed through the agenda until we get to the point in time that you're at the item that you're most interested in, but we'll do our best to try to avoid that after we can. With that, we will move into the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by a moment of silence on two counts. First is, in memory of former city councilman Jerry D. Dapper, who served as the sixth district councilman from 1992 through 1995, and recently passed, our condolences to the D. Dapper family and friends. And then also, in remembrance of the more than 131,000 American citizens who have lost their lives as a result of COVID-19. So if you would, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible).
Mrs. DeMaie. Mr. Benicki.
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti.
Here.
Mr. Emmons.
Here.
Mr. Belovich.
Here.
Mr. Compton.
Here.
Mrs. Bulker.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of June 15, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, then the minutes will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorials, there appears to be none, nor are there any reports of special committees. So we will move right along to ordinances on first reading.
Yes, Mr. President, we have proposed ordinance number 2020-23, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, authorizing the investment of public funds pursuant to Indiana Code 5-13-9-5.
Thank you. Proposed ordinance number 2020-23 will be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee. We have no resolutions, so we will move into ordinances on second reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-13, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is PUD to allow quick-service oil changes at a use and reduction of parking spaces, setbacks, and landscaping at 317 West Indian Ridge Boulevard. The petitioner is requesting an amendment.
Thank you. At this point, the Chair would entertain a motion to delete the ordinance in its entirety and replace it with the proposed amended amendment as has been submitted.
Show moved. Okay.
Motion has been made and seconded to delete the ordinance in its entirety and replace it with an amendment as proposed by the petitioner. Any further discussion? And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. DeMaie. Mr. Benicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hazen.
Yes.
Mr. Emmons.
Yes.
Mr. Belovich.
Yes.
Mr. Compton.
Yes.
Mrs. Bulker. Mr. Hicksonbaugh.
Yes.
Amendment.
Thank you. We will then move into a second reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance number 2020-13 as amended, I'm sorry. The record will reflect the fact that we received a committee report at the last council meeting, so with that, we will now move into public comment. Anyone wishing to, who is physically present, who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance as amended, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Peter J. Agostino, turning up Law 131, so, yeah, for the petitioner, the fee of the labor plan, it's fine, hit a few highlights. 71, flexible requirements of the day. The proposed ordinance that has been, has replaced the prior ordinance, does lay out the conditions that we think satisfy the requirements for the, our petition, that the existing condition to the property or subject of system with what we proposed, that we believe that the proposed oil change facility is complementary to other services in the area, that building design and layout is consistent with the character of buildings in the area, based on our experience with the lot, the petition's experience trying to market, place the lot, this appears to be the best and highest use for this particular parcel. Think it will not have any negative effect on property values, and we think that, that it is something that is consistent with the comprehensive plan that does need to be I would also like to make a brief point on a couple of issues. I think concern that's been expressed has been the density of effect to use vehicles in the area, and I'll remind you that, that anticipation is that, first of all, 60 to 70% of vehicles that are people using, expect to be people, looking at initially 20 to 30 per day, don't think that that's going to have a negative effect on the city. I think the other thing that I'd like to make is that, as you consider your decision tonight, that not fall down the road of what I would call the slippery slope arguments, and those are arguments that have been made to ask you to consider things, don't have any real likelihood of it. Slippery slope arguments are arguments that are based on facts, something that appear. And why are slippery slope arguments, I will tell you that if lawyers use those in courts of law, they get ridiculed for doing it, because they're not based on that. Slippery slope arguments, horrible type arguments, those are based on trying to convince you that they're something that has a very small likelihood of going to be used. They're arguments that ignore your ability, counsel, to treat cases in the future, ignore your ability as a counsel to differentiate in the future. And I think that, and I bring this point because some arguments have been made about considering the presidential value of grain in the petition, nevertheless, I think that on its merits, this petition could be granted, if you meet the requirements for grain in it, and I would ask the council to have the petitioner approve it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Agostino? Mr. Agostino, just for one point of clarification, it's my understanding that in addition to your work on the amendment that has been approved by the council for consideration, that you worked with our council attorney, Mr. Triple, on directing that document, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there anyone else present in the chambers who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance as amended? Seeing no one, anyone physically present in the chambers who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance as amended?
Not going to reiterate anything stated last time. To Agostino's point regarding slippery slope, I would state that the slippery slope has been stated in the petitioner's argument, when they've used Drive &amp; Shine as an example of precedent for the area, and also Midas, which has never, was never designed to have access to Main Street, any physical access to Main Street, which only occurred after the fact, with that, with that.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prince? Nice try, Mr. Prince.
Yes.
Mr. Compton.
I appreciate that, and I struggle with this a little bit, and when I, when I listen to your argument, and I try to put it where, you know, take all that in and consider all that, and strongly consider, Drive &amp; Shine wasn't intended to have access off of Main Street, but it ended up that way.
No, Midas.
Excuse me?
Drive &amp; Shine always was meant to have access.
Oh, it was. Oh, I misunderstood.
Right. It's Midas, that's on the other side.
Okay. All right, but still, this, this particular business, or what we're considering here, I've driven by there, it's, it would be barely, in my mind, barely visible from Main Street, let alone access to, I mean, it's going to have access to that side road, whatever that is. I grant you that, and I understand that, but help me understand how this is access to Main Street.
So the entire Home Depot Center, you have to look at the center. So if you think of the Home Depot fronting Main Street.
Yes.
This is actually in front of Home Depot.
I understand.
So the access for Home Depot is the same access for the main street.
So anything in that lot, you would consider access to Main Street? Okay. Including things like Office Depot?
Yes. It fronts Main Street, Aldi's fronts Main Street, it also fronts Douglas, just like Home Depot also fronts Indian Ridge, Center, without lots, all fronting.
Aldi and all of that, you consider frontage on Main Street?
Right, in terms of a plan, so if you go back to 2002 when this was presented, this was very much presented without any automobile uses being permitted, that's why they're back requesting it now. It was very, they actually, we worked with them to acquire property, the expansion of Main Street, the city doing improvements to Main Street, part of this development. I think it's very definitive that this is a property that fronts on Main Street, it also fronts on Indian Ridge, comes as a whole set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Other questions for Mr. Prince? Thank you, Ken. Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance as amended? Now, since I was a little bit hasty and ignored our friends who are participating remotely, I'm going to try to clean up my mess and offer the opportunity to anybody who's participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance as amended, if you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance as amended, if you would, also please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, are there any council members who wish to speak? Mr. Hazen.
I'm sorry, I was hoping Mr. Rakovich would be on remotely. I don't know if Mr. Agostino can answer this question, but do we know who the operator is going to be? I was under the impression it would be Rakovich, but it's not going to be.
It's not Rakovich, and I think Mark was supposed to be calling in.
I'm available, this is Mark Rakovich.
Did you want to direct your question, Mr. Hazen and Mr. Rakovich?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Mr. Rakovich, this is Tony Hazen, I was wondering if we know who the operator is going to be?
The operator is a Valvoline franchisee.
Okay, and does he operate several others?
I believe this, this location would be his eighth store, so he operates seven stores throughout northern Indiana, from Lake County to Elkhart County.
And he did not feel the need to come before us tonight?
No, we do that on his behalf.
Okay, thank you.
Just for a point of clarification, Mr. Rakovich, for the record, if you could, please state your full name and address.
Mark Rakovich, 7750 Cree Trail, Indianapolis, Indiana, 46250.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Any other questions for Mr. Rakovich?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Hicksonbaugh.
Mr. Mamalanti.
Thank you, Mr. President. This question is, pertains to, or directed to, council member Benicki, just curious as to see, since being your district, have you received any calls in opposition to this proposal?
No, I've, I've received no correspondence for or against.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mamalanti. Other questions and comments? Well then, I want to thank both Mr. Agostino and Mr. Prince for laying out some very detailed arguments and considerations for us, and I think that they both have made some valid points. Myself, I am less compelled by Mr. Agostino's slippery slope argument, with all due respect. I tend to come down on Mr. Prince's side, I think that it's incumbent on us, as we reach these decisions, to try to project what it will do for the future of development in, in the area, if in fact, we approve a particular use. So I understand Mr. Agostino's argument, but I think that we do need to be concerned about precedent and presidential value and what it does to the, the best interests of the community. In this instance, however, I'm compelled by the record that's been developed that the precedent with regard to automotive use in this vicinity has already been set, not only by the Drive &amp; Shine car wash that's on Main Street, but by the Midas facility that is just north of this and is in fairly close proximity to Main Street. I also find it relevant that there are any number of automotive uses in the broader sense of the word that are prevalent in this corridor, whether it be Costco and the mechanical work that they do, whether it be Walmart right across, I'm sorry, Sam's Club right across the street that does some automotive work, whether it be the, any number of restaurants, and I lost track when I drove with the other day, how many drive-through restaurants there are, and, you know, to me, the presence of those vehicles that are queued up in those restaurants' lines for the drive-through, and I'm glad that they're popular, but that's a more visible presence of an automobile in that corridor than what would be visited upon the community by this automotive use that is going to be done in the interior in a very well-done building. So I worry that to now draw a line in the sand with regard to automotive uses based upon those factors, does run the risk of us being deemed to have been arbitrary and capricious with regard to this particular use. I'm also compelled by the discussion of the market that took place at the last council meeting. I believe that, given the information that was provided to us about the time that this property has sat without being developed, that the market has spoken with regard to other uses coming in, and that the time is right for this to be developed, particularly when we consider what's going on with the retail market in the northern part of Mishawaka. We still have a vibrant commercial corridor there, but we've had any number of stores that have closed in recent memory, so I think that now is not the time to turn away a high-quality development such as being, as is being proposed this evening. I also spent some time considering the point that Mr. Triple made at the last council meeting, that our comprehensive plan is always a matter that we should take into account when we're reaching these decisions, but it is not definitive and binding on us, that so it should be considered, but it doesn't drive the outcome. I also think that what this discussion has under, illustrated for me is that, and Mr. Prince and I have had this discussion over the course of time, it's high time for us as a community to get back to the comprehensive plan, and, you know, the name itself speaks volume. We're working under the Mishawaka 2000 Plan that has work product that was generated in the 1990s and, you know, on some level in the 1980s, so I think that, and this is no criticism of anybody, it's the type of project that I can only imagine is very time-consuming and detailed and perhaps expensive, but I think it would be in the best interests of the community when the time is right, and right now, in the midst of everything else that's going on, it may not be the right time, but I think it's time for us to get back to that comprehensive plan as other responsibilities work. So again, I appreciate the points that were made on both sides, but on balance, I do believe that this is an appropriate project to be welcomed into the community, so I will vote voting in favor of it this evening. And with that, if there are no other questions or comments, I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please pull the council?
Mrs. DeMaie. Mr. Benicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hazen.
No.
Mr. Mamalanti.
Yes.
Mr. Emmons.
Yes.
Mr. Belovich.
No.
Mr. Compton.
Yes.
Mrs. Bulker.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh.
Yes.
Ordinance as amended passes 5 to 4. Proposed ordinance number 2020-19, an ordinance amending Chapter 125 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the Historic Preservation Ordinance of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to include removal of historic district designation or de-designation.
May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President, to the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your Committee on Land Use Planning, whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2020-19, report that they have examined said matter and that in their opinion should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to receive the committee report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have, we're going to skip right by it. I'll beg forgiveness later, Madam Clerk. This is the second reading of a public hearing on proposed ordinance 2020-19. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Krista Hill, I'm the Associate Planner in the Planning Department. Back in September of 2019, Indiana Landmark Organization hosted a de-designation workshop, which was attended by our Mishawaka Historic Preservation Commission Chairman, Doug Merritt. It was, there was an incident in Fort Wayne where someone wanted to move the historic designation from their house, and it became a little bit of a, I think they called it a circus, because they didn't know what to do in the first place, submitting letters and things, and they, they didn't know, they didn't have a process to take it through. The state legislature, legislature has added some de-designation or this removal of historic district designation, which back in 2013, but a lot of the counties in the state have not adopted it. So all we're looking to do is to adopt that, and instead of copying the code word for word, we just refer to Indiana Code 36-7-11-23, so that in case they would ever change the state code, we wouldn't have an outdated code, we could just go back to that section and refer to it. And again, just the, the terms removal of historic district designation and de-designation were kind of used there. So again, the Historic Preservation Commission heard it at their June meeting and recommended it be forwarded in favor.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Hill? Mr. Compton.
Yes, um, could you give, I don't want you to read the whole, because I know how state law can be, can you give us just a rundown of my own historical home, how I would go about, what's the process?
About removing your historical designation?
Yes.
So first, you would have had to have gone through something to have your house designated, through the council. So to remove it, it would be a similar process. I think I forgot to mention that there's an application that I did make for just city of Mishawaka's use, so they would have to fill out that application, and that application lists probably about 10 or 12 different criteria that we ask them to provide us with, so if, for example, the reason that they want to remove the designation is because they need some sort of work done on the home, new windows or new roof or something, and that the cost of those repairs is just abhorrent, they would have to provide us with paperwork, contractor, contractor bits and stuff like that. I don't want it anymore, isn't, that's not one of the boxes you can check. Maybe not being able to sell it, you know, again, having, showing that it's been on the market for a number of days, whatever. They would provide us with that information, and then it would go through the process to go to the Preservation Commission.
Be just a reverse process of what, what person has now designated.
Correct, the process is.
Thank you.
You. Other questions from the council? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance who is physically present, if you would, please come forward to the podium. Seeing no one, anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of proposed ordinance 2020-19, if you would, unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, we will invite anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance who is physically present, if you would, please come forward to the podium. Seeing no one, anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance, if you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, are there any council members who wish to speak? Thank you for your work on this, and I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please pull the council?
Mrs. DeMaie. Mr. Benicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hazen.
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti.
Yes.
Mr. Emmons.
Yes.
Mr. Belovich.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Bulker.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh.
Yes.
Proposed ordinance 2020-20, an ordinance to maintain Norman Heights, is a conservancy district within the City of Mishawaka, Indiana.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President, to the members of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, your Committee on Land Use Planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance 2020-20, report that they have examined said matter and that in their opinion it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Okay.
Motion has been made and seconded to receive the committee report. Let's go ahead and hold the council, if you would, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Benicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hazen.
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti.
Yes.
Mr. Emmons.
Yes.
Mr. Belovich.
Yes.
Mr. Compton.
Yes.
Mrs. Bulker.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh.
Yes.
Committee report.
Thank you. We will now move into the second reading in public hearing of proposed ordinance 2020-20. Anyone who's physically present who wishes to speak in favor, please come forward.
Krista Hill, Associate Planner and Secretary for the Historic Preservation Commission. Back in May of 2017, the council approved a ordinance, ordinance 5574, as amended, for a conservation district for the Norman Heights historic district. This conservation phase only lasted for three years, so from last November to this February, the neighborhood and Historic Preservation Commission worked to, put this in quotes, "receive opposition to the elevation of the district to a full historic district." That's how it reads in the ordinance. So at the three-year mark, they had to decide whether they wanted to become a So at the three-year mark, they had to decide whether they wanted to become a full historic district or if they wanted to stay a conservation district. So we sent up, well, we sent up more than 315 ballots, but there are 315 houses or lots within the Norman Heights district, so we needed more than half, it would have been 158. We received 175 votes in opposition, and we did receive 29 votes in favor of the historic district, but because more than half were in opposition, they would like to continue the conservation district. So this is just something official to make that, you know, instead of just having the votes, to make it official into an ordinance to, I guess, as a partner ordinance to that one we didn't. People don't just see that and then wonder what happened with the three. Again, at the June meeting, the Historic Preservation Commission recommended it be forwarded for approval. And we did not, the Historic Preservation Commission did not, April or May.
Thank you. Any questions? Mrs. Volker.
So a conservation district only has purview or only requires a certificate of appropriateness or to come before the Historic Preservation Commission for the demolition of a house, the construction of a new house, or the moving of a house. Those are the three big things. Now, if it were a full historic district, we could say every time you put a deck on your house, or windows, or change the roofing material, things like that, then you would have to come. And in Norman Heights, they weren't looking for something that strict, they were just looking to maintain or preserve their neighborhood as it is. So they just wanted to come in, tear down houses, or build houses that were out of the style of what we do.
You. Other questions? Mr. Benicki?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the trial was three years. So now, is this going to be another three years and we're going to reevaluate, or is this?
No. Yeah, it's one three-year period, and now this is it. We will not have to do this every three years.
Unless they decide they want to upgrade.
If they want to upgrade, then yeah, then we'll go back and start, kind of start over, I guess. But yeah, there's no ticking clock that says the three.
Questions? Well, since my mom lives in Norman Heights, and she started to watch these movies or these replays, I better ask at least one question. Just to clarify for the record, the action that we would take tonight to approve this ordinance will not change the circumstance for the neighborhood that's been in existence for the past three years.
Correct. This is to maintain the conservation status of the property.
Thank you. My mom thanks you for that clarification.
Sorry.
I appreciate it. Anyone else?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Melanti?
Sorry, just kind of to piggyback on your question, if you could clarify, so we would continue the conservation status if approved?
Yes.
And the votes that were taken by the residents supported that extension of the conservation status, correct?
Yes. Yes, the way it was.
Okay, thank you very.
Oh.
Please continue.
Sorry, go ahead.
The way that the ballot was voted was, no, I do not want. I don't have the ballots in front of me. They had to oppose, so it was like, the answer would be no, I do not want to elevate to, I want to keep conservation. Yes, I want to keep conservation. All right, that'd be the vote.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you again. Anyone else who is physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, please come forward. Then we will move into anyone who is participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, if you would, please unmute your microphone. Hearing no one, anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance, please come forward to the podium. Seeing no one, anyone who is participating remotely, if you would, who wishes to speak, please unmute your microphone. Hearing no one, are there any council members who wish to speak? Thank you, Mrs. Volker. Any other questions or comments from the council? And I call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you?
Question.
Ah, I jumped in front of you, Mr. Benicki. Thanks for cleaning that up. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Demade?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Ms. Melanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belavich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Mr. Hicksonbaugh? Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes nine. Proposed ordinance number 2020-21 and ordinance amending chapter 137 of the municipal code of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana is from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the city of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from I-1 heavy industrial to R-1 single-family residential to allow for addition to a garage on property with an existing single-family home at 3706 York Street.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the common council of the city of Mishawaka, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance 2020-21, report that they have examined said matter and that in their opinion it should be adopted. Signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to receive the committee report. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Demade? Yes. Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Ms. Melanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belavich?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Committee report.
Thank you. This is the second reading in public hearing on proposed ordinance 2020-21. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Ken Bergner, I live at 3706 York Street. Really thank you for passing that, because we're going to be using that for storage to get my boat, and I would be, you know, parts, one was out of the weather. I thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If so, please come forward. Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please unmute your microphone. Hearing no one, is there? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance dealing with 3706 York Street? All right, then we will move into, anyone who's physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance, please come forward. Is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If so, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, are there any council members who wish to speak? Not, then I call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Demade? Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Ms. Melanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belavich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mr. Volker?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes nine two zero. Proposed ordinance number 2020-22 and ordinance annexing contiguous territory to the city of Mishawaka, Indiana, providing zoning classification. Therefore, this is to annex a zone to C-1 general commercial for future medical office at 16813 Douglas Road. We will have a public hearing and no vote.
Thank you. We will move then into the public hearing on proposed ordinance number 2020-22 as required by state law. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Then I will inquire if there is anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak with regard to proposed ordinance 2020-22, if you would, please unmute your microphone and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
Good evening. So my name is Satish Adis Malini. Address is five, hello?
Yes, we can hear you, sir. Please proceed.
Address is five one 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 two Old Cottage Drive, Granger, Indiana.
If I can interrupt you? It's a little bit difficult for us to pick up where you're at. You try holding your phone a little bit further away from your mouth, hold it closer, or maybe walk around and see if you can get a better signal, but I don't know. I guess I'm having trouble hearing you clearly.
Just a minute, sir. I'll just go out of the house. Can you hear me better now?
Sounds like, yes, I can, so please proceed.
Okay. So, yes, so I'm the prospective buyer of the property. It is about an acre of land on West Douglas Road. That whole area is starting to develop into a medical use area with a lot of dentist offices coming up. I am a veterinarian, and the goal is to eventually probably put a veterinary office up there at some point.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Compton?
Yes, I'm looking at a map of this property, an aerial map. Is this located, is this located on the corner of Douglas and Seneca?
No, sir. This is actually between State Road 23 and, not main, but the other, Grape, between Grape and 23.
Yes, I understand, but its exact location in that, that's quite a long area. That's about a mile at least, or somewhere in that range, I would think, close to that. Where is it in that area? It looks like it's on the north side of Douglas. And again, I'm looking at a map that is of that area, and it looks, it looks like to me, I'm a little confused as to where it's at, actually.
It's the property, it's right next to, it's between the insurance office and the 711 gas station. So, sorry, I was just looking at the map.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Other questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you, sir. We appreciate your participation. If you would, at this point, please mute your microphone once again.
Shut.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Hearing no one, is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward to the podium. Seeing no one, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then we will close the public hearing on this matter, and final action will take place at our next regularly scheduled council meeting. We will then move into privilege of the floor. At this point, members of the public are invited to speak with respect to non-agenda items only under privilege of the floor. If you would, come forward and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
Live at 205 Indiana, right across from our wonderful high school. I have a concern with the new sidewalk and curb you're putting in down there. You're pushing the west-side residence two-plus feet out into the street farther with the new sidewalk and then the six-inch curb they got going out there. I've got pictures I can email you on it, so, and my concern is, it's not even, the line that they're doing on the sidewalk and the curb is not even straight, like a crown. But I call it crown, okay? It goes out a bit. And what, in front of our house, is where the horseshoe is for the high school, the new entrance and exit. High school has come out right at the edge of where the old road was at. So when you get people coming out, and they want to make a left-hand turn to go south, well, they're going to have to go out farther. And if we're parked in front of our house, we're two and a half feet out farther in the roadway, and guess who's going to get hit? Everybody that drives around the high school drives real, pleasantries, okay? But it's going to be a mess. And the other thing is that between 115 and 217, there's 21 automobiles. Out of that, you have three houses out of those that have got driveways that'll hold two cars. I'm fortunately enough to live next door to the duplex, which is 201 and 203, and they have five cars, which one of the five is usually blocking my driveway or in my driveway most of the week. But if, the situation with the pushing us out in the streets got me, because it's going to be bad. And the one picture I have shows that the south end of the, where the curb, you stop right behind the house that's on Lincoln Way. It stopped. It doesn't go all the way to Lincoln Way, and there's three feet from the old sidewalk where the new end of the curb comes. So I don't know, I'm not here to demand action. All I'm, I'm just the voice in the wilderness, okay? And I'm just concerned, because I can't wait to see what those guys are going to do with my driveway. You guys cut back three feet into our property, I think, I don't know about right-ofways and different things like that, but you're back at least, I'm not sure what the right-ofway is on a residential street from the center. How much right-ofway do you guys have?
Oh, I think what we'll do is we'll defer on getting into the specifics, but one of the suggestions I'm going to make to you is that after the meeting, if you want to touch base with Mr. Prince, I'll ask him to be good enough to serve as your contact person with regard to his office, and then perhaps Engineering Department and any other.
That's fine. I tried to contact a contractor. I called them twice. I got the secretary, and the secretary says the individual that's over this project is out of the office all the time. I've left a message, but he doesn't have email or voicemail.
And that is frustrating. My other suggestion, Mr. Johnson, would be that if you, and I don't know if he'll be able to address your concern or not, but I would suggest that you contact Mike Faulkner, who's the Director of Facilities for the school corporation. And Mike would have the ability to be able to put you in contact with, or at least to be able to chime in to a certain extent on this issue. The other thing that I would suggest that you do is, before you leave, pick up one of our city clerk's cards, and then if you want to forward the copies of the pictures that you have for her, she can make sure that the council receives them, that they're forwarded to Mr. Prince and anybody else who would have some interest in it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm here to help, okay?
Oh, and I appreciate that, and I suspect that one or more of us will drive by at our, you know.
Oh, you might just drive down the road. You can, you can see it.
It will eyeball it, but I think it would be helpful if we received the picture to, you know, really hone in on what your concern is.
The picture's worth a thousand words, and I've eliminated one, but I can get you.
Understandable. So, yeah, please send those pictures to our clerk. She'll make sure that the council receives a copy of those. She'll make sure that the council receives a copy of those. Again, after the meeting, if you want to touch base with Mr. Prince, he's a really helpful gentleman, and if he can't address the concern, he'll at least help guide you to the proper department here at City Hall. Then I would contact Mr. Faulkner at the School Corporation, and if you have any trouble reaching him, let me know, and I'll be happy to facilitate those.
They're meeting Wednesday night to give my permanent parking pass.
Excellent. We will give them a heads up that you are on the way to see him, so they'll have extra security, Craig.
I met Dr. Barker accidentally when he was out taking pictures.
All right, thank you. Craig? Do we have a question for you?
That Faulkner's number, did you say?
That's the reception-
258, what? 254? Okay, I'm deaf.
4500.
4500. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? Seeing no one, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? Thank you. With that, we will move into unfinished business.
Yes, Mr. President, we have the matter of reconsideration of proposed ordinance number 2020-17, ordinance number 5697. As I explained earlier this evening, we had an error in the publication of the public hearing, which has caused us to republish this ordinance and ask for the council to open the public hearing back up again and vote again.
Thank you. The record will also reflect that we previously received a committee report on this matter. So with that, we will move into, once again, second reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance 2020-17. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, who is physically present or who is participating by phone, if you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. And I believe the controller is participating remotely.
She is, but she has nothing further to say about this ordinance than what was there, so I told her that I would speak on her behalf because it was my office's air.
Excellent. Then we will inquire if there is, as to whether there is anybody else who's physically present who wishes to speak in favor of proposed ordinance 2020-17. Seeing no one, anyone else participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of proposed ordinance 2020-17? Please unmute your microphone. Hearing no one, is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to proposed ordinance 2020-17? Please come forward to the podium. Seeing no one, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to proposed ordinance 2020-17? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Demade? Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen? Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker? Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes on reconsideration nine to zero, and I thank you for your consideration and the care in my office. Thank you.
New business.
I believe that this evening, if I understood Mr. Prince correctly, Mayor Wood was gonna be participating remotely and provide us with an update with regard to COVID-19-related matters. Mr. Mayor, are you on the line?
Yes, Mr. President. Do you copy?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The floor is your-
All right, Mr. President. Well, thank you, Mr. President, council members. Dave Wood, Mayor, here to really report a very stable situation in the city of Mishawaka in regard to COVID. We are operating under Governor's Phase 4.5 right now. We've had to make some adjustments based on his announcement last week that we were making those. We have no new cases that we are aware of at the city as far as our city employees through the clinic, and so that's been very good news as well. So things, we're starting to, you know, do things, especially with our Parks Department, like have a concert series. While tonight's was planned at Patel Park, it was canceled due to the heat index. That one caters particularly to elderly, senior citizens and such. But, so we've gone about the process of doing six-foot circles in the park so that families can social distance properly and stay within those circles. And so we're doing that. We have moved our farmer's market downtown. Had an opportunity to go and inspect that. That went very well, able, in fact, to space out a little bit more, which is very nice. It is an essential function, so it is permitted to have those things, at least that. And then as far as equipment supplies, we're doing very well. In fact, we just got a shipment of PPE today, fire department. So we're, as far as run volume and all of that, we're very normal. And I anticipate that you are all receiving the reports from the hospital, as was requested by Commissioner Compton, and I believe that Chief Woodward hooked you up with that. So with that, that's kind of a summary of where we are today.
Thank you. We appreciate the information. Next question from Mayor Wood.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Would, are you able to tell us how many people, how many employees of City of Mishawaka were diagnosed positive with COVID?
Well, they were confined to the fire department, and so none beyond that, as we know of, that were diagnosed as positive. So I believe you are aware of all of those numbers. It was maybe eight firefighters, maybe some, a couple spouses in with that too. But all have been, all have recovered, and most have been cleared for duty. A couple were still working back up the endurance to get back to duty and may have, you know, taken some extra time to do that. But the good news is that all are doing well.
Good, good. Thank you. And I wasn't aware of the exact number. We were getting the reports from the chief. He went on vacation, and I didn't get any last week. So, but I know we'll get them again, and I appreciate you doing that.
Okay, and nothing new since then as far as cases, at least as far as city employees go?
Okay, good. And I watched the St. Joe Hospital cases, and it also gave county, other counties in the area. And it was interesting to watch those. Was able to do that, so appreciate that very much. The only thing-
Well, yeah. Our citizens are doing an outstanding job, I will tell you that. They have taken our recommendations, those of state, federal, seriously, and as a result, we are not a hotspot. Continue not to be one.
I am thankful and appreciative of that. It is, it's kind of a, you know, it's a bit of a scary situation. The only thing I would ask is we monitor this, and I know you will, that we monitor this closely. And if we need to, I see pictures, I see things, and masks are worn by some and not by others. And I realize it's, masks have become a bit of a political hotspot, and I'm not, I don't understand why, but it seems that's what it's become. But what concerns me is if it does get, starts to ramp up, that we act on it as the city of Mishawaka, not necessarily waiting for the state. And I just ask you to consider that. I think you will. If I see it, if I'm concerned about it, I'll let you know. But right now, it appears things are moving along pretty well. Hopefully, it stays that way. We've got fall and the winter coming ahead, and we're all concerned about second phase of this. Thank you for the report, and just ask you keep close attention to it, and I know you will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Other questions from Mayor Wood?
Yes, Mr. President?
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes, thank you. Not necessarily a question, but a brief request for the mayor. If there's outstanding news regarding no additional firefighters, so if you could please extend a great job to Chief Woodward, the other firefighters that were responsible for that, and all those that were involved in containing that. So, job well done.
We'll pass that along. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mamalanti. Well said. Other questions or comments from Mayor Wood? Mr. Mayor, thank you again for the information. We appreciate it, and it's always good to hear the good news. To piggyback on one of Mr. Compton's comments, as I understand it, the news is not as positive in some respects for our neighbors to the east in Elkart County. And given the number of Mishawaka residents, who I'm sure we all know, who work in Elkart or live in Elkart and work over here, vice versa, as I saw this evening shortly before coming that the CDC was gonna send an emergency to Elkart County, the question popped up in my mind, is there ever any interaction in the county that you're aware of between Elkart County and our officials over here, or even more directly with us as a community with regard to what they're doing so that there's coordination of effort across the country?
Well, I know that the health departments are in contact. I know that the health systems are in contact, and so that's where a lot of the information, the data would come from. You take a health system like Beacon, they've got Elkart General Hospital, they've got a South Bend, you know, Memorial Hospital, and then they have a Mishawaka Hospital as well. So they're monitoring that. We have very good coordination, I think, between the health systems, between the health departments. And I also just attended a meeting just a week ago where I was in communication with the mayor of Elkart, the mayor of Goshen, the mayor of Napanee. And so, you know, we kind of keep, you know, we kind of keep track of each other and what we're doing and all of that, and we're talking about the subject. So, you know, you've got a lot of disparate communities out there doing a lot of, you know, doing, Elkart's come around with the mask order, which I think coincides a little bit with St. Joe County's. And so, you know, there has been some communication for sure.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that information. Anything else from Mayor Wood? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate it. Thank you. Is there any other new business to come before the council? Compton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple things I'd like to comment on tonight. One, the Fourth of July, about, I don't know, 9:00, 10:00 o'clock in the morning, lights flickered, went out, thought this is Mishawaka. Give them a couple minutes, it'll be back on, because that's what usually happens. That's my experience since I've lived here. But it didn't come back on right away. And looking around at social media and such, appeared that somebody hit a power pole. So I was headed to a little family pool party and decided to drive down there. And there were several linemen out there, hot, sweaty, muddy, humid day on the Fourth, out there working, City of Mishawaka employees. I stopped and thanked them. I don't know how appropriate it was. I was in my Hawaiian bathing suit, t-shirt, and thanked them for their work. But I did tell them, you know, I hope they get to the pool later today. They were, they said they'll be lucky if they do. But I got home, my power was on, the air was running. Greatly appreciated the work that they do in the city. It goes unnoticed until those times happen. A little familiar with the work they do. It's hot, it is heavy, it is, it's tough work. And again, we don't really notice them until times like this, so very much appreciated. Not to mention their IBW, so I'm a little bit proud of that, too. And then another thing I'd like to comment on, I don't know if there's something that the council wants to do about this. I know that it would be challenging for the city to administer it, but the level of fireworks in our community is out of control. I can deal with the Fourth of July, a couple days before, maybe even a day after, but it is out of control. I don't know how you would bring it in control, even passing an ordinance, because then somebody, the police gotta go out and administer this. And my gosh, I, my wife and I were talking about, how would you chase this guy? People run off, you know, they're not supposed to, they're lighting them off where they're not supposed to, at times and days they're not supposed to. So even controlling what we have is obviously a challenge. I don't know what we can do, but I'd like for the city to think about it, for the animals, for the veterans, in our community. And I understand celebration and one out there and have been, have lit off fireworks in my day. It's out of control, and I think most people would agree with that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Just for the record, we do have a fireworks ordinance.
Oh, I know we do, and that's what I, I would kind of reference to that, that a lot of what is being done, Ms. Clerk, is, I'm referring to, is outside that ordinance. And so maintaining that is even a challenge. Doing something different, I don't know that it would work, is my opinion. I'd like us to think about it and, you know, if there's anything we can do, I know there's people that would.
Thank you again, Mr. Compton. Other new business to come before the council?
Yes, Mr. President?
Mr. Mamalanti?
As I'm asking this question, just like Mr. Compton, I'm throwing away my snakes and sparrows as we speak. But note well taken. But also just wanted to take this opportunity to briefly mention that the Twin Branch Neighborhood Watch Meeting conducted their second Zoom meeting, very well attended, lot of thumbs up from the residents, and we are gonna take the summer off, and we will keep you posted as to our next meeting, whether it will be in person or via Zoom. So thanks to all that attended, council member Hazen, Hicksonbaugh, and Demade for attending, and we will keep you updated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mamalanti. Other new business? Then we will conclude by reiterating that the Mishawaka County Council has instituted changes in the way in which our meetings are conducted during the current public health emergency, which has been extended until August 3rd by order of the governor. These changes are consistent with the terms of multiple executive orders issued by Governor Holcomb, as well as related legal things. It is anticipated that the council's normal meeting procedures will be instituted at the conclusion of the public health emergency. In the meantime, fiscal attendance at council meetings will continue to be restricted in accordance with relevant guidance related to limitations on public gatherings and social distancing. During the public health emergency, council members, as well as members of the public and media, will continue to be afforded the opportunity to remotely access council meetings. Recordings of council meetings, if applicable, and the minutes of the meetings will also be made available to the public and the media as soon as is possible, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we work through these alternate procedures. And with that, if there's no other business to come before the council, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So move.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.